The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. We are starting our work study. Tonight's discussion is strictly on host fund. And so Jenny, I will let you have the floor. Jenny, can you move them? You're fine.
The 2020 budget, the 2021 budget and the 2022 budget for comparison for you guys this evening. The first column is what was budgeted in 2020 and then the expenses that we had. The same for 2021 budget and then expenses. And then, of course, the 2022 expenses are year-to-date and they are as of today. And then the 2023 are the amounts that have been requested. Mark and I met with the department heads last week and the totals here are the requests among the department heads. So I think from here, I'll just, Mark, do you want to add anything and we can let the department heads?
So there are a couple of things that, and I included in your packet, the host fund agreements that have been established over the years. One of the things that really caught my attention in the host fund was that one of the permitted uses was for professional services. And we moved all that money out of the host fund last year and put it back into the general fund. And so as you see for 2023, I'm asking actually that it be moved back into the host fund and take it out of the general fund with an addition because we've had a quote from Taft Law to provide attorney services to our plan commission and our BZA for $18,000 annually, which is incredibly cheap, really. It's really a good price. And they would include a great deal. They would probably, I can't remember everything that was included in that. Do you remember what the, that's right, and attending the meetings and, yeah. So we felt like that that's a good, especially with, as our plan and BZA gets more in the weeds of things, but that it's a good idea to have an attorney at those meetings. So the reason I brought that in, I asked for that money to be moved back into the host fund is because that is what the host fund, one of the permitted uses is for professional services. And I know as we go through our budget process for this year, you know, I know there's concerns about personnel and staffing, whether it be Parks Department, whether it's police, fire. I don't normally include water and wastewater because they make their own money. They're like the richest kids in town. So, but I do think that, you know, again, as we look at our future and our growth, that we do need to look at some employment status in some of those departments. And by moving that money back out of the general fund into the host fund, we free up that money in the general fund to hire additional staffing. That was my only logic in trying to do that because I do think it's a permitted use of the host fund. As far as IT services are concerned, again, we're talking about a lot of money that was in our, that was taken out of the host fund. It's listed as 100,000. Again, we're going to try and negotiate that down this year. Obviously, we're up for renewal of the contract. But what I looked at was is that that frees up another $100,000 out of our general fund that we can utilize for staffing and move it back into the host fund, which it is a permitted use into the host fund. I understand these are not my decisions to make. This is your decision as a council. These are just my recommendations because again, I'm trying to look at that, that bigger picture of, of the staffing and then, and how we utilize our host fund.
Thank you, Mark, for that explanation because that was the first thing that I noticed when I saw this. Can you cite where it, and I'm not challenging you, I just for reference, for my purposes, where does it reference the permitted uses for this?
I'm going to refer back to Lisa because Lisa's the one that pointed it out to me.
Okay. And while you're, okay, that's fine. Take your time. I guess my, and that's, that's fine. I mean, if that's something that we can use it for, then great. But my concern would be we have, we have something, we have a source of income that does have a life to it. And I think it's very dangerous to start relying on something that doesn't, is not going to be around forever.
I can't dispute that.
And even if we have, what, 20 years left on the, on the lease or whatever, I mean, things could change where, you know, EPA could come in and say, no, you got to do something different with your dump. So I think that, you know, if, especially if we're using it to hire personnel, which I'm not against, but that's a multimillion dollar proposition when you're hiring new personnel. So we've got to make sure we've got those long-term funds available. And, you know, one thing that will help with the tax base will be an expanded tax base. So, you know, for all the negative comments about, you know, growth, that is one of the reasons, and I'll specifically say from the police department perspective, why we haven't been able to hire the way they want us to hire, because we've refused to expand our tax base over the last 20 years. So I guess, and I don't want to take all the time here, but I welcome others' comments too, but I just think as we begin to move things back in here, we've got to really make sure we've got a plan for down the road.
Absolutely.
Because this will go away someday, long after I'm done, obviously, but I hope to still be living here at that point. And I certainly don't want the residents to get hit with a huge tax increase because we didn't plan very well.
And that's, that's part of the reason why that I've made the recommendation that I've had because again, the host fund can't accept, obviously, personnel costs. You know, that's, that's prohibited.
Sure.
And that's why I wanted to free up the general.
Sure.
So that we could start expanding our personnel even before we receive the income of these growth areas that we're still, we're planning for our future, obviously, which
And you're talking about the expanded residential areas. Okay.
And, and I know that's one of the things we've kind of taken a beating on is, is are we preparing for the future? And that's all I'm trying to do is help us prepare for that future.
Sure.
The other thing I'm hoping will occur, and I, I wish I had a crystal ball, but at some point, you know, it's my objective that the priority projects start going down.
Sure.
But I know that everything the department heads have asked for, especially Will's request, those are needed requests. I mean, I know Will's not going to come to us with, you know, the Chrome lug nut stuff. He's going to come to us with what he needs. So that's kind of the reason that I was looking at, trying to move that around a little bit.
Well, and that, that presents, you know, another element of the situation. You know, these priority projects, the way I look at it, these are things that are going to come around from time to time because it's maintenance, it's, maybe there's a new standard we have to live by, whether it's the pool or whatever. So, okay, well, that's my thoughts.
Mr. President, I did find the item, it's item I under the ordinance number one.
Okay.
And it does say that, says to contract for or employ the services of any person or firm to work on any activity or project falling within the scope of the previously listed purposes, including but not limited to engineering, financial and legal professionals.
Is it wrong or?
Oh, no, it's not. I mean, I just read it from the, you know, from the ordinance. I'm not, it's not wrong. I don't know.
So did I hear it wrong? Did I hear you wrong? Did it say for special projects or priority projects?
It says for any activity or project falling within the scope of the previously listed purposes.
So you can pay professional fees for work associated with those previously listed?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, well, there's A through H on what I'm assuming are those other previously listed items. Everything from incentive grants, retiring debt, leasing vehicles, it does talk about the, to prepare real estate for purchase or construction.
Okay. Well, thankfully, we're not voting on anything tonight. So I, I mean, I personally, I think it would be good if we read up on that and made sure we understood that and were comfortable with that. I'm not opposed to using the funds for permitted uses. It's, it's just making sure. Because one of the, you know why we did it last year, why we moved it out was to not rely on it for annual expenditures.
Absolutely.
Which an employee would be.
Like I said, the, the reason that, that I was proposing to move it back in is because I know we've been talking about personnel matters.
Sure.
And that way we can keep personnel out of the host fund, which again, we're not looking at, we'd be looking at back to the general fund by freeing up, you know, $253,000 out of the general fund.
Mark, is, would there be an option for both the general fund and the host to share that burden possibly?
We're limited only by your guys' imagination truly.
I got you.
I mean, Jenny, is that accurate?
Yes. Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Well, and I would, I would add-
And we've done that in the past. Like, in the past, we had budgeted $60,000 from the general fund for professional services and then budgeted in the host fund as well. So we have done that.
One other important thing I think to look at is projecting this out for another 10 years. I mean, if we're, if we're getting, correct me if I'm wrong, between $700,000 and $800,000 a year from the dump, but we're spending a million dollars a year out of it, eventually we're going to go the wrong direction on that.
No dispute.
So we probably need to look at that too before we just rubber stamp 253 into this budget.
And I'll make a comment that I made before is like, you know, if, if, you know, we are extremely lucky to have this host, you know, agreement. And, you know, if, if there was not this host agreement paying for some of these expenditures, then, you know, there's only, there's only one entity left to burden that, you know, to carry that burden, and that's the taxpayers. So I think we do need to be careful on this.
And the other thing that I, you know, that Mr. Van Leer had hit on that I'd forgotten about, to be honest with you, you all had a presentation on leased police vehicles from enterprise leasing. I don't know how many more payments we have on the current bond. Do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, we owe for all of 2023. Our final payment will be January of 2024.
Right, okay. So one of the things that we've talked about as department heads is trying to look at what else could be leased, not just police vehicles. What else can be leased as far as fleet vehicles for public works, water, wastewater, things like that? Is there cost savings in that? And, and again, we discussed where, where would those payments come from if we do this? And, and again, the host fund is an acceptable use, which we're virtually doing it now by paying bond payments, but it does say that, I believe, vehicle leasing is one of the accepted uses, so.
Two, two things. You guys have anything? I keep talking. Okay. Okay. Two things on that. And it reminded me of something. So when we had that presentation, I had asked about whether or not that comparison used actual numbers. It was like a $900,000 savings over a period of time. I, the answer was kind of vague. So I'm wondering, and I know Chief Hilton's not here right now, but I'm wondering if maybe he can refine that number a little bit.
He's been asked.
Yeah, okay, good. Because I do, it does sound like it will be savings either way, so I think it's a great thing to look into. Obviously, doing that again creates an annual expenditure requirement out of this limited budget that we have. And so, and I know I'm getting way out in the future here, but I think it's incumbent upon whoever sits here and who sits there over the next 10 years that as these homes come in, that, you know, we're, we're understanding what kind of revenue that's going to mean so that we can slowly continue to wean off of this because it will be gone someday.
Right. And I think the other thing, you were talking about that, I know Will and I've discussed the leased vehicles. I can't remember who you said utilized them in the park service, but that they actually made money. That's why, again, we started looking beyond the police vehicles. We, we felt that there may be a market within the rest of our fleet. As far as, as the host, again, that really was my only true interjection here. I just wanted to explain to the council why I had asked the clerk treasurer to move that money from the general fund back into the host fund. It doesn't mean that it has to be done. It's just, like I said, I, I just wanted to point out how much, I guess, money we could save in the long run out of the general fund if that's what we chose to do. That's all, and that's the only reason I'm doing, pointing it out.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir. And then I didn't know, Jenny, do we want to go through each one of these line items or are they fairly self-explanatory to the council? Obviously, we have a lot of time left, so.
Well, I did want the department heads to talk about their priority project request. And then, I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to go line by line or if you have questions on any expenditure. I think I did, I think I did fail to tell you guys, the top line is the revenues we received for each year as well. So from the waste management. So in 2020, we received $749,622.29. And so, and then in '21, I had multiple conversations today at the clerk treasurer's conference. They do anticipate, of course, things like this to go down this year, so.
I was just going to ask you why that went down. Do we know that?
Well, why it's only the 233,000?
Well, that, but it looks like the, oh, that's, that's the budget. The, how did the revenue look for 2021?
That's the actual revenue.
703?
Yes.
Okay, we budgeted 749?
Yes.
Oh, no, that was 2020. Okay.
Yeah, that's the actual revenue in 2020 and then the 703 is the actual revenue in 2021.
And speaking with waste management, two, two reasons that these numbers are going down. One obviously is they're promoting more recycling. As the world tries to promote more recycling, people are sending less waste to the dump or to landfill. I apologize. The other thing is, is there's more competition. There's landfills in Marion County, in Morgan County, that companies that do the disposal don't necessarily have to use our, our landfill any longer. There are other options available. And, you know, that, it has become a source with the, I want to make sure I say this right because I don't want to upset anybody, the recycling district, is that right? Yes. Because they've talked about increasing the tipping fees. And one of the things that waste management has expressed to me about the increase in the waste, in the tipping fees is that it will in fact cause competition to do better because there are landfills out there that don't have tipping fees. And so it would be, cost-wise, it'd be better for these companies to go, you know, spend the extra gas money to go to Marion County compared to coming into Hendrick's. So although-
The tipping, they didn't get raised. The tipping fees did not.
But I will say that as gas prices go up, we stand a better chance of them using our landfill because it's closer. But, you know, these are just, these are just my, you know, conversations with waste management, so. I'm sorry, Jenny, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
So Jenny, I just had a quick question. And I know, I think we discussed this a little bit last year and I, maybe I just need a refresher.
Sure.
So we have all these line items for various different things, but we also don't have a line item for the movement of money from the host to the host future fund. Can you, can you remind us about how that's accounted for in this?
Because we have separate fund numbers. So the host fund is 709 where we receive the quarterly revenue for our spending, for our annual spending into. Fund number 710 is the host future fund. And what happens is when we receive our revenue checks from waste management, so when we received our first check in January, that was for the last quarter of 2021, but it goes into our 2022 revenue, of course, we take 40% of whatever that check is for and we deposit it directly into the host future fund till we get to the $200,000. So it doesn't show here because it has its actual, when you receive your cash reports in your claim dockets, there are separate fund numbers, one for the host fund and then one for the host future fund.
So, so the 703, 502, is that a gross number or a net number?
That's net.
Okay. So we received another 200,000 on top of that, but this is what went into 709?
You got it.
Got it. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you. Mr. President, I don't have any, I don't believe we need to go through the line item, but it does look like the Parks Department has a majority of these items and I would like to hear from Will.
So most of my requests are pretty much via our master plan. And one of the big themes was before you look outside your borders, you need to take care of what you have. And I think this pretty much shows that. A lot of these are needs and they're really expensive. So splash pad remodel, that one, I mean, if you've been down there, you see it. It's, it's 15, 16 years old. We've done some rehab on it, but it needs to get like new features on it and resurfaced and stuff. And so that's that first one. Slide structure, so we, the slides have been redone, but the actual blue structure that holds up the slides, the paint is so old, it's actually gone in some places. And I had the slide company give me a number and it, I don't know if they just didn't want to do it, but it seemed really high, but that's the only number I have for it right now. I think I can do it cheaper than that. And if you've been in the pool house, I mean, it's 1984 and it's, besides paint and stuff, it's never changed. And so with that is, you know, it's kind of like when you enter, your first vision of, of the pool is right when you enter. And it's, it's, it's not up to par. I mean, it's really bad. And it's the old school access where you go straight into the restrooms first, which is just kind of weird in general. Concrete floors, countertops are falling apart, some of the electrical needs upgraded. So this is like the minimal to ma, to modernize it with basic, is very basic modernization. North Park field remodel, so because the water plant is going in there, we will have to do something with the fields there. So, and that's about the price to do a very basic, fully fenced Little League field with drainage. And so we were going to use the other dollars from the sale of the property, which I'm still waiting on a check from Matt for that, to do the other one. So really, it's kind of like a matching is my hope. And then that way we can repurpose the old football tower right where it sits. So we don't have to rebuild anything. It's just fixing the fields we have. And the Little Leagues have expressed problems because the fields are so open that they can't maintain them or keep up with them because, you know, they'll go drag the fields, put brand-new stuff on it, and then someone will ride their bike right across it. Or, you know, the, somebody will have a picnic and, you know, they use it for the picnic and, and it's a hard thing. And I do still want to have some fields open because I think that's important. It's a public park. But some of the fields, you know, if they're for baseball, they need to kept, be kept for baseball. So that's kind of a real basic plan there. And then I think the roof repair is Berry's and that's over Hargrave. It's needed it for probably five years and we, we did a, like a quick fix on it, but this is to actually replace it. And then the roof is the most important thing on a structure because everything else falls apart if a roof is open. I think most of the other stuff. Rob, you maybe want to take that one?
Yeah, the police department vest, that's been a reoccurring expense ever since, I don't, I can't remember. Do you know how long, Jenny? The police department, I know they've been doing vest out of there for a long time. And it's just, as crazy it may sound, police vests actually have an expiration date and it's due to the perspiration deteriorating the, the Kevlar that's inside the vest. I just have a little knowledge on that. Chief Roberts, explain the other two things on there.
Good evening. I have a couple of items, unfortunately, that I need to add to this. Last year, we had an employee twist his ankle on the concrete at 92s. This was brought before the council before. And this year, we had an employee break his ankle. And so I'm kind of trying to do this concrete in two phases. So if you pull into Station 192 off of Twin Bridges Road, the apron's right there. And from, from that portion of the apron back to the entrance of the bays is basically 100 by 100. And so I have received a quote from Fish Concrete for $87,000 to, to replace that 100 by 100. That's to tear it out and to pour it back. We do believe there's six inches of concrete there now and we will pour it back with seven inches of concrete. And that apron takes a beating every day from them heavy trucks turning in and out. So, you know, you think about the trash trucks, how they're beating the roads up, well, our fire engines are beating that apron up. So I received one quote for $87,000. The second item that I need to add to the host fund, and I'm sorry, I don't have a quote for this one yet, is the roof at Station 191 on Kentucky Street. It's very spongy and the gutters need to be replaced. I'm meeting with a contractor tomorrow to, to get a quote on that. And I'm meeting with a second contractor on Monday to get a quote for that. So the, the rehab of the concrete bays, we have a section where, when the station was built, they actually had to tear all that concrete out because it failed. And so when they, when they tore all that out, we have like six or seven expansion joints coming at one point. And we believe that's failing at that point. So we're going to have to explore that a little bit. So I'd put a rough number of 25,000 in there. It could be less than that, but we think we've got, starting to develop a void underneath there. So we need to explore that. Maybe we can do that in-house, I'm not for sure, but we'll do everything we can to, to cut that cost down. If we have to, I will take the AC unit off of there and we'll try to limp that for another year. And so the, the costs are, are starting to add up at the station. This year, we had to replace the hot water heater there. We had to get the stove repaired. And so things are just starting to nickel the dime us because it's a 20-year-old building.
So are you referencing the one on the west side of Kentucky Street or the east side of Kentucky Street?
Where we house the fire engines on the west side.
Okay.
That's a flat roof. When did we replace that? So, and, so the guys, one of the shifts got up there the other day to clean the gutters out. And so the roof was spongy and the, the gutters has, they have holes in them. So it's beyond its lifespan. So I'll report back once I receive those quotes for Station 191, 52 North Kentucky. So when I receive those quotes, I'll report back to, to the town manager and then, and the clerk treasurer and we'll see what we can do with those.
So do I understand correctly, on top of the rehab for the concrete, you're asking for $87,000 for the apron at 92 and then an unknown amount for the roof at 91? We'll, we'll put it in, I mean?
What was the 25,000 you mentioned?
That's for the concrete inside the fire station itself for the, in the bays.
So we've got 87, 25, and the unknown amount?
So, we've got 87, 25, and the unknown amount?
So, the 87 is for the, the concrete on the outside of 92?
Yes, the 87,000 is for half of the concrete on the outside. So, I want to try to do this in two halves, okay? Coming in off of Twin Bridges Road, from that point back to the bays, and then, the following year, looking at Section 2, coming from where we, where we stopped and moving to the, to the west, to finish the apron out. The, the parking area in that west part of the parking lot. But, but the worst section is from the entrance back to the bays of the firehouse. And, and we've tried to do some repairs ourself, but they just, they fail with the expansion and with, with the winter.
Now, Rob, are these, the last two you mentioned, are these expenses for 2023 or this year?
Wherever I can get it out of. I mean, the, the concrete, I feel is important because we've had injuries, and, you know, the roof, I don't know how long that's going to last. So, with, with the roof, when the contractor gets up there, I'll just have to report back and say, you know, yes, we could probably get next year out of it, or it needs to be replaced now. So, I apologize bringing these in at the last minute, but that's when they happened.
We can put this back into the spreadsheet, and obviously, we're not voting on anything tonight, so if we can send it to the clerk treasurer, and, and she can send it out to you all in another spreadsheet, I would, I guess. I don't know. I don't know that I've ever had this happen before, so.
Well, I guess if that's something that we have to add to the host budget, then, to Greg's point earlier, finding a way to share some of, if, if, assuming we bring those expenses back in, finding a way to share those at least one more year.
Right. Like I said, I just, I've explained to you, like I said, the only reason that I did that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anything else, Jenny?
I don't have anything else unless you guys do. I did, did Ann send everybody, Ann updated the spreadsheet la, late Wednesday, or late Monday night, excuse me. Did she send it to all, I'm sorry, I'm about to put the microphone, did she send it to all of you or just David and I?
I think it was just me and you.
Okay.
I, I've not seen anything.
Okay. It came over late Monday night, and Brendan and I have been at the conference, so we plan to work on that the first part of next week. We'll get it updated and sent out to you guys next week, so you have that as well.
Mr. President, if we don't have anything else, I'd like to take advantage of a few things, if you don't mind. I know we've got.
Sure.
Okay. The question that has arisen for July 6th and July 20th, because of the budgeting process, would the council be interested in meeting at 5:30 as opposed to 6 o'clock for the work study sessions?
On both of those?
Yes, sir. Because of, again, the complexity of how we're, we're trying to get everything done, staff would like to have a standalone work-study session on July 27th. It's an extra Wednesday of the month to have a work-study. And Jenny, that's at 5:30 as well, right? That you wanted to have that one?
Well, we won't be limited on our time that evening, so we could start any time.
Right.
What we were, I think, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, what was the purpose of that again?
Well, at the last council meeting, we had discussed breaking up the presentations by the department heads, and the first meeting in July, doing public safety, and then, the next meeting, doing public works and all of the utilities. And we also need to discuss the edit fund and the other funds that are per se non-departmental that we all touch. And so, we thought, so that nobody's rushed and has sufficient time, that, that would be the best way to do it, unless you guys want to do a Saturday, which we talked about as well, so. And that's another thing that I wanted to see, is if, if we do that, break it up by departments and focus on that in July, then I thought, like, the first meeting in August, which we could probably do this in an hour, I'll, I'll double-check with Ann, but is, like, concentrate on salaries and benefits, that first meeting in August, maybe the second because that's, we rely a lot on AIM to get all that information gathered together, so it may have to be fun. But, kind of going in, in that direction, because, you know, the first is September, we have to start making decisions, so. And as you guys know, it comes fast. I just thought that, you know, like I said, so that nobody's rushed and everybody can ask questions and go through it in detail, that, that may be the best way to do it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, we want to do 5:30 on the 6th and the 20th, and then, do you want to do 6 o'clock on the 27th? Do you have a park board on the 27th? So, yeah, we may, we may go downstairs, we'll, we'll do some, or we'll make sure we can record it on.
Okay. Or could you say 6 o'clock?
Uh, no, 5:30 on the 20th. 5:30 on the 6th and the 20th, and then.
27th, I'm sorry.
On the 27th, I think. Park board means 6. Okay. We'll be here at 6 on the 27th then. The 6th and the 20th will be at 5:30, and the 27th will be at 6. The other thing that I just wanted to kind of brief the council on is that we have met with Hendricks County, and the dream, I guess, of, of putting a stage on the east side of the courthouse is becoming more of a reality. And so, we've reached out to an engineering firm to make a design, to give me a cost, obviously, to see what it would be to do the project, and then, we'll be applying for a grant. And we think we've got a pretty good shot at making this happen. If you're not familiar with what our intent was, is to put a permanent stage on the east side of the courthouse, therefore, when we do have the concerts on the square, we're not having to shut Marion Street down any longer at 8 o'clock so that we can bring in a temporary stage, so we're not disrupting those businesses. We only have to bring in one street closure on Washington Street at Marion, and we're, we're ready to go. And the other advantage is, is that from a food and beverage standpoint, by having it on that east side, that will face franks, courthouse grounds, central normal dips. So, it really kind of fixes a multitude of sins, I guess, so to speak. So, we're excited about this, the county's excited about it. So, thanks to the partner, downtown partnership, Chamber of Commerce, Kevin Kavanaugh, and Will, this, this may actually occur, so we're excited about it. With that, I've not discussed this with hardly anybody, but when I look at communities that have vibrant downtowns or they're vibrant destinations for tourism, one of the things that most of them have are public restrooms. And obviously, we don't have public restrooms. And so, it's not this year or anything, but as we talk about the future, and again, as we're talking, because this is a host fund budget we're talking about tonight, next year, I, I may actually come to you and see if we can put public restrooms somewhere within that downtown area. I don't know where, I don't have a clue, but my thought, when I think of places like Nashville, Indiana, and Gatlinburg, Tennessee, those, those places have public restrooms somewhere. You know, they don't have a, a large amount of them or anything, but it's just something for us to think about, so. I think it'll be, I think it'll be much more appealing than the portlets, no offense, Andy, so, but that's just my thought. I know Will has told me the horror stories of managing public restrooms, so we'll, we'll, we'll see where it goes. I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Everybody has to have a dream.
That's your dream, huh? Public restroom.
There you go. I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Anything else from the council? Jenny?
No, thank you.
All right. Entertaining motion adjourned.
Have we adjourned the meeting?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're adjourned.